I'd like to welcome everyone and to the City Council July 6, 2020. City Council meeting, I'd like to open it up at 7:00 PM. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I see we have two additions to the agenda tonight.
Yes, you're gonna have 13A is going to be a letter from Jan Verardi. A correspondence and 13B is going to be information from Dale Latham on the CZ Trail and signage at Anderson Park. Just a Anderson Park signage.
Are there any other corrections or added items to the agenda tonight other than the two on the correspondence? Would anyone like to?
I have something I'd like to bring up, I don't know if it would be under items from city councilors or under new business, I'd like to request we go back to Zoom meetings. I would like to request we go back to Zoom meetings. So I don't know where you'd like to put that.
Okay. Would that be under new business? Probably.
Yep.
Okay. So, are there any other corrections or additions? Would anyone like to make a motion to accept the agenda tonight with the three additions to these meetings?
I'll make that a motion with the aforementioned additions.
Motion's been made as our second.
No, second then.
Second's been made, you want to call roll, Stephanie, please.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor McNair?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, there are no presentations, is that correct, Stephanie?
Correct.
I do not have a mayor's report tonight, moving on to council committee meeting reports, there are none. There's one topic from the floor tonight. And Cory Uto?
Yes. Where would you like?
You, right there, at the little podium behind you. And if you'd like to state your name and address for the record.
All right, I apologize, I was not sure how to tell that out, so it's actually myself and Relena O'Leary-Roberts. My name's Cory Uto, I live at 210 Bridge Street.
And my name's Shirley R. Lasovia, I live at 1278 Louisiana Avenue. So, yeah. Okay. So we are Vernonians for racial justice and equality. We are a peaceful newly formed group of diverse Vernonians with members representing lifelong Indian residents, people of color, and white residents. We gathered to demonstrate after the killings of Omant Arbery, George Floyd, and Breanna Taylor, to stand in solidarity with the local crime and police brutality and racial harassment. Our initial goals were simple, to signal to Vernonia that there are some in the community who stand against racism, and two, to start conversations about racism in our community. After three successful demonstrations and over 300 comments on social media, we felt those initial goals were met, yet there is still work to be done. At this point, we would like to, one, engage with Vernonia City Council and Vernonia Police Department to help make Vernonia a more welcoming place for people of color to visit, live, work, and play. Two, educate our community about historic and systemic racism through our events and presentations, and in partnership with Vernonia School Board. And three, facilitate difficult conversations about racism within our community by hosting and organizing structured moderated discussions between community members. Some people feel that racial issues are irrelevant to Vernonia since it is over 94% white and therefore pointlessly divisive for the community. We disagree. Racism is experienced by people of color living in and visiting Vernonia. Examples of this include racial slurs by a resident inside a local business, racial slurs written in social media posts by a school employee, a resident person of color being told you do not belong here inside a local business, and general coldness or instability towards people of color. Vernonia prides itself on being removed from hostile and vultured bigger cities and providing for a peaceful, quiet way of life, but some Vernonians can be unfriendly and sometimes hostile to those considered outsiders. This is problematic because Vernonia businesses rely on tourism revenue and Vernonia is likely to continue growing as it is a relatively closed bedroom community with available land and space. Also, Vernonia historically had a very active KKK chapter and minority residents were segregated. While our history might not be as violent as other places in the United States, it still requires honest reflection and reckoning. We must examine past racism to understand and dismantle its painful legacy today. We invite community members and leaders to join us in making Vernonia a more inclusive place for people of color and more welcoming to new residents and visitors. We come before you today, our elected city council members, to express our concerns about racism in Vernonia and our urgency to seize this moment of racial reckoning to create positive change. We ask that you share our concerns and our urgency. Join us along with the rapidly growing number of communities across the nation in improving our community by putting forth a resolution denouncing white nationalism. We as Vernonians want to clearly state our position of inclusion and equality and see Vernonia represented in such a statement. We feel it would be the appropriate first step towards making Vernonia more welcoming and we offer our help to the council in drafting such a statement and our support in navigating and educating about racially sensitive issues. So we, that is the statement that we drafted and we do have capacity to pass out to the members a copy of that. And there's also on the back of it, there's an example of a resolution that was drafted by Lane County Commissioners that we felt was very effective. And that's all we've had to say at this time unless you have questions or anything for us.
I don't know how you did it Cory, but you nailed it right on five minutes. Sure appreciate your concerns for our community and thank you for coming forward tonight and I'm sure the council will look over this recommendation and study it and sure we'll talk about it further.
Thank you, and I just, I do want to point out that every one of us is part of this group and here and we support this today.
Thank you Cory. Cassette Agenda for Acceptance, none. Cassette Agenda for Approval. Can any, everyone hear me okay? Okay, I'm doing my best, I've never talked with a mask on other than to my wife to tell her what groceries to get, but I'll do my best. City Council Meeting Minutes for June 15, 2020. City Council Work Session Meeting Minutes for June 22, 2020. Go ahead, Susan.
On the Cassette Agenda for Approval?
Motion's been made to accept these two meeting minutes, is there a second? No second. Second's been made, would you call roll, please Stephanie?
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor McNair?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, any unfinished business tonight? None? Okay. New business. Telecon request by Counsel Wagner for a, to go back to the teleconferencing method of holding our public meetings. And do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure, if you happen to be, welcome, it's wonderful seeing so many people. As you notice, most of you are not six feet apart, even though you're all masked and I truly appreciate that. The numbers are going up. A lot of people come into town, come out of town, they go to work, they come back, they go shopping. I think it's incumbent upon us as councilors, as city councils, to make a decision to make these, make these meetings available to the public through Zoom so that we can all stay physically distant rather than socially distant and allow our residents to also participate in our meetings safely. I'm concerned that every one of us in this town, and our numbers are going up, Columbia County has another three as of yesterday for midnight, and so I think we should do our best to stay ahead of that. As technology can be unavailable, we used it successfully.
Well, we did pass a budget on the teleconference mode and how does the rest of council feel about it? Gerald?
Well, on the phone and Zoom is two different things, are you, are you meeting the Zoom platform specifically?
No, any platform that gives us the opportunity to meet did from the safety of our homes or offices, whatever we prefer. Zoom is an option because it allows those who want to be on camera, on camera, those who want to simply phone in can do so as well. And Google meeting has a great option as well.
Yeah, I really don't care what platform, I know, I think there were some issues with Zoom, I think our company got away from it for security reasons, but I'm not sure if those have been resolved, so. The phone thing, if it works for the community, I'm fine with, I think it's probably a good idea maybe for next couple, three months, see how it goes, I don't know.
Counsel Wagner?
If we're gonna do that again, what I noticed when we were teleconferencing, the public was a little more shut out. Didn't seem like we were that accommodating for public comment, and that's kind of what I had wanted, to get back into chambers, so. So we need to figure out how we can keep the public comment active, Stephanie, there's no.
I did advertise that people could sign up to speak and they could also submit written testimony to be submitted to the meetings, nobody did that. So that falls within our legal obligation to allow people to participate. So if they signed up to speak, she would not use it. Otherwise you have all the background noise and you have no control of your meeting.
The one thing that you can do, which is option, is the raising hand option that's on, I know it's on Zoom, I'm pretty sure it's also on GoToMeeting and Meeting Place. All of those have that. That said, we do not usually accept public comment in the middle of agenda items, although there is a left. So I think that might be an option, I don't know if our city reporter has any thoughts on that. But at least it would be an opportunity for people to listen in their meetings while they have it. If they had questions, they could email them or raise hands or at least be able to note down and bring that forward to City Council at a later date.
Do you have any live interaction?
Uh, there's written comments?
Or not, I can reach out to other cities to see if anyone's had success doing that.
I'm a little concerned about barriers. I mean, it was bad enough with the phone, we didn't get much participation, we did get some. So if you add a computer in Zoom, some people, I can have the technical equipment or the technical experience to participate. So I'm just thinking if we're gonna do it, maybe the phone is the most even way most people could participate.
Except that Zoom allows public, Zoom, if you want to sign in using the video, you can, or?
Or phone in.
Or phone in only, I mean, it is an option. And a lot of people don't like people seeing their lovely faces in messy living rooms.
I think you can turn that around or something, right?
Yeah, exactly.
What does the staff feel, is that a big burden for staff to do a teleconference in, or? We got pretty good at it actually.
It's a lot easier.
What do you think about it, Stephanie?
It's a lot easier for me because I set this up every time. And so having to coordinate it and then make sure everything's cleaned up afterwards, I understand what you guys' desire to have a new person, but it is a lot more work for staff. And my recording is significantly better through that, all my platform, because this doesn't do a very good job.
Do we want to take a general consensus, consensus for the next, for the 20th meeting? Counsel McNair?
Well, it's gonna come on me, I'm surprised to hear it. We went through a period where we did do it and that was probably during a period when we weren't quite certain of where things were going. I think at this time, we're a little bit more certain about things. I think we have a duty as a council to, as a, from a leadership standpoint, whether or not that's to go back to that or move forward and try and battle through this. I'm not really, at this point, I'm not really ready to make a decision on it, I haven't really thought about it till now. I do think that you lose a certain ability to have a thorough discussion when you're, when you're separated.
Yeah.
By telephone or by whatever electronic means you use. Although it's difficult for the, the community to come in and participate in it, I think they're better able to participate in this manner than they are via the other manner, I suppose. Maybe we could get used to it, but. That's my point, might be go there.
Well, we wouldn't be able to, we have a lot, like you said, Counsel, it'd be a lot easier for us to hear the concerns of the public like we did this evening in this format versus a teleconference. Where all, everyone in this room is wearing a mask and we're doing our best to, to social distance for sure. I notice the people that are sitting are family members sitting with each other, which is acceptable. So, but whatever the wishes of the council are, get a general consensus, I'll go with it.
There are 18 people in this room right now. And certainly family members are together, but they're also certainly not six feet apart from the next people who are not in their family. So if we are going to do something, we're going to have to do it in a different location with a completely different setup because there's no hostility of allowing this many people to attend meetings safely. I don't know what you, I'm getting pretty warm in here, which means all this air is circulating interior, not exchanged, which means we are all leaving each other's air at this point. In all honesty, we'd be able to see or hear from a lot more people safely if we do it through another technical method. In my.
Yeah, I think if we were in here in the audience, we can't be doing this, so. So I had to kind of try to cancel my hair on that bit, so.
Is there the wishes of the council to go back to, starting on our next council meeting, July 20th, go back to a teleconference type meeting?
May I ask that it be more specific for those who are able to do so, that we do use a video type with the option of call in? Because I truly believe that some of Counsel McNair's concerns will be addressed if we're able to do it with a meeting where we are moving each other's spaces.
Does everyone have capability of doing a Zoom conference?
Capability, desire, probably not, but.
Stephanie, say it, no.
So GoToMeeting, the platform that we used before, has the capability to use video. Counsel Wagner did briefly utilize that a couple times until she realized she was the only one. So I can, I mean, you guys are welcome to use that platform, staff does not have that capability, but I'm sure that we could order some desktop computer, desktop cameras, or just aren't fitted that way, and I don't know how to work them, so I'm not using my personal, plus it's a stick.
Yeah, those are the best that I've, smartphones could do it on there and then order staff camera setup. Yeah, and they're, even though the good ones are all sold out, you cannot get them, I think ones that are of acceptable quality are available. And if not all, I'm going to call.
Well, so how many people want to do this at the council? Gerald?
I would recommend that motion, if you.
I'm just trying to get an idea right from my. I'm thinking maybe a test, might want to do a test meeting beforehand, make sure we're all, the platform's working and everything, so I'm not sure if the next council meeting is gonna be too quick for that transition, but. I'm not opposed to it at all, I do have concerns about the public being able to walk in here and voice their concerns, but obviously tonight we got more than we've probably got in a year. Either way, I feel alone, I would mask up if it gave the public opportunity to come in and face the city council and voice their concerns, or I would do it by teleconference if the majority of people telephoned us more comfortably. So Ethan, affection.
Stephanie?
Just maybe recommendations, so for concerns of our public not being able to access phones or computers, the first couple meetings that we held, I did have a phone set up in the lobby and I can do that again, so the public is, can come here and testify if they want to during Capitol Center floor.
So are we, do we have the capacity? Will you, as staff, be here in this building? So we do have the capacity for a desk we set up at the front that has the citizen comments cards on it, so that they can turn it in in the same manner that they would, worthy to attend this incoming meeting in person, correct?
Sure, and then I can help facilitate that section to make sure that, because you won't be here, you won't see them.
That you could either share, email it or share it as a document?
Yeah.
On the screen for those who have that capacity. So we would not be.
Can you repeat that?
So the meeting in Zoom, have the ability to share screens, or to PDF, the person who needed, who wanted to share their concern to the council, you could PDF that, either share it by screen or, as you said, send it by email to the mayor.
I would recommend that if anybody has the materials they want shared during their Capitol Center floor, that they would submit it by Friday so I can get it to all the councilors because having an interactive station like that, it'll be a nightmare, trying to get it all set up and all working properly and then your concern of being, increasing exposure of people than your only exposure is staff.
I was more thinking of the sheet of paper that says, hi, my name is. It's pretty aggressive, and that's, that's fine.
Yeah.
As long as the mayor was okay with that.
If that's what you guys are wanting, then I would have them, submit them to me and I won't be up there with them, you know, maybe set up my station up there during the meeting so that I can interact with the public and then all read who's up and all explain their time. So instead of the mayor facilitating that, facilitating that section of the meeting, I would, if that's okay with you guys, if that's what you want to do.
Yeah, I'm okay with it. So. Do you need a motion to, okay.
Does anybody know what our neighboring towns in Columbia County are doing?
They're having video meetings.
Yeah.
Or phone meetings.
St. Elles still doing video?
Most, I mean, it's not like ours, but you can have it.
So you're able to reach out to them if you have any questions or concerns or grievances or whatever?
If I was unsure about something, yes. I think we've pretty well hashed it out in the reporters' world.
Is to each from now on, you have time to figure it out?
Yeah, sorry, you have the platform, you're familiar with it, you know how to work it, just the new thing will be meeting up there, helping the public.
And Joseph and I will meet on the 13th for the agenda. So we'll still be able to do just the phone end? Okay. So you're gonna, you're gonna call for a motion? Oh, I would, yeah. I would like to call for a motion, change our format. Susan?
Certainly, I would like to move that the Vernonia City Council, for the foreseeable future, until a, a condition to be determined later occurs, like numbers go down, people or whatever, that should be our goal, that we will need to be a video and telephone capable platform. Did that work with Stephanie?
Yes.
Sure, second. No second. Second's been made. Call roll, please, Steph.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Allen, or sorry, Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counsel McNair?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Chief Connor, do you have a report tonight?
Do you have the thing, I don't take up too much of your time, we have 158 calls for the month of May, I didn't have a June report in here, June was a substantially busier month than that's when I, when I say we were just over 600 incidents per month for June. just over 600 incidents per month for June, which is more than double normal. And 158 is more normal. So over 100 for the next four. Blood enforcement is still about now around the average 64 open cases coming. That is all I had.
I see a lot of new open cases and blood enforcement, namely the...
The growing season?
Yeah. Grass is full, a pretty few issues.
Almost all ground control.
Thank you, chief. I'll get with you. I want to do a ride along this next week, maybe. I'll get with you. Okay. Ordinances, resolutions. Resolution 2020 to 08. A resolution of the City of Renone approving an intergovernmental agreement for electronic records management services between Page 8 through 16.
Okay. This is a resolution being brought to you guys by me for online records management, O R M S, with the state of Oregon and Chavez Consulting. Exactly, we will be... The company helping us with that. I did not receive any questions from any councilors, so I'm not really equipped to answer any crazy questions about it. If there's any legal questions, I can forward those to the city attorney. He did review this and...
Well, we went over quite a bit in the past meeting.
We've talked about it, but this actual... This idea didn't come before yet. Since it means this in order to actually move forward with the program.
Question? Well, I guess, you know, being self-captive here tonight, you don't have to face through all this if you don't want to, but...
Can I ask you a question? Should we, like, come back and if we see that this topic is on the agenda that we came about, or will one of you get in touch with us? Or what... How do we follow up on a topic?
So I'd probably get in touch with you guys at their direction for the resolution if that's what they are thinking they're gonna do. There's probably a meeting where you discuss it. There might be a follow-up meeting where they would adopt it. If that's where they're from. I'll get in touch with you guys.
So we could all scoot, so we're not... You can't be doing that. I've already held hostage. You don't do that.
Yeah. And I apologize to the protocol of how we handle it. I apologize to that.
No, that's okay. It's interesting. We don't need to be breathing.
Yeah, so they typically don't act on topics from the floor as a rule. They sometimes direct staff to look into something or bring something back to them. But typically, the people get stuck here, and then they're like, "How long do we have to sit here?" But they won't be discussing it later without... If that makes sense. They don't typically discuss something again.
Keep us posted.
Thank you.
You're sure welcome to...
We certainly appreciate you showing up.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
And you can stay.
So getting back to the resolution for the electronic records management services. Any discussion or questions? If not, okay, quiet here.
I read through this. It's basically a contract. It's a contract that leaves a lot of questions to be answered, and I'm not asking you to answer them. I just want to find out some of them. Section 4 on Page 11 talks about payment. There shall be no charge to agency by SOS for the consulting services described in this agreement during the initial term.
Two years.
Initial term, so it doesn't tell you what the charges are gonna be later. And you continue on following a few sentences there. It's again, there's costs associated. It doesn't tell you what they are. Pretty much all the way through this document, when I read through it, it talks about payments or fees or whatever they consider... Whatever the state or the agency would consider. It just never lays out how much fee, how much it's gonna cost you. And even in termination of this, it doesn't say what that termination fee is gonna be. So to me, there was a lot to be desired on. What's gonna cost you?
I didn't actually answer that one. I don't have, obviously, all the rest of the paper in front of me. But so the Secretary of State owns the program and the data, everything that goes in there. They contract with Chavez Consulting, who manages the data centers in Baker City. And we pay Chavez. Chavez pays the Secretary of State's office. We pay them, it's like $370 a month. So whatever that is, that's all.
That might be there in the budget.
That's probably why those outlines specifically in here. Right now, we don't pay them.
I'm not talking about the monthly fee. I'm talking about the other fees associated in here. It doesn't tell you what those could be or will be.
Fees for...
Just when you read through it, it talks about associated fees. This fee, that fee. It never says what those fees are gonna be if things go wrong or if there's charges for looking up data or other charges associated. When you read through it, every word talks about fees. It never says what the fee's gonna be.
Because at this point, they're not aware of the fee.
Right.
If they are ever...
Because it's like there's a trial session where there's no fees associated. But after that trial session, if there's fees associated, it says we'll discharge you. It doesn't say how much. So I was a little bit concerned about that.
But it does say that though, if there are any fees to be assessed, they're going to tell us for January of the fiscal year when July would be the year we would pay them. So you would know six months ahead of it whether or not you're backing out or changing your mind before.
But if there's a... If you're gonna back out of a contract, if you want a separation fee there, it specifically talks about that. How much is that?
Where are you looking at?
Is it in the...
Yeah, what... I haven't seen...
There was a separation fee. I had a...
Oh, termination. I probably got something here. Oh, it's in Section 7.1, Page 12, down toward the bottom. Number 1, SOS shall have the responsibility for any of the agency's costs for...
No, it says shall have no responsibility.
Oh, shall have no responsibility for the agency's cost for termination. Yeah, that's SOS. That's Secretary of State. So they're gonna pass the cost on to somebody else, which would be who?
Well, obviously, there's only three parties. There you go. That's what I got out of it. It didn't say what the termination cost would be. It said you decide you don't want to do it anymore.
That's if we choose to terminate.
Right.
Then they don't pay our cost for terminating.
Yeah.
And so we have to hire another company to move all of our files over. They're not responsible for that cost because we chose to terminate our contract.
Well, they could be a termination cost for the penalty for backing out of it.
That's what it's saying.
Yeah, that's what I... Well, either... Just for clarification, I was speaking to what you said and your response to what you said. And I can't remember exactly how you turned that. But it was a response to that. You said that there would be no cost, or...
No, I said that they will let us know the January of fiscal year.
Right.
But the next fiscal year, if there's a cost associated with it.
Right, yeah. Why should we not be able to know that cost now?
Because what I think is ultimately what they're stating here is that there may be a fee associated with terminating with the Baker entity, not the Secretary of State.
Right.
So Chavez or whatever terminated the fee. They're not gonna pay it. This agreement is just between us and the Secretary of State. They're just laying out.
Oh, okay. So this is not a contract with Chavez itself? Okay.
This is just the Secretary of State who owns the program and is gonna house the...
So does that clarify what we're...
But we will be contracted with Chavez.
Yeah, so there will be a separate contract that will have a...
Yeah. And it will all come here. It doesn't have to come here because it's less than the threshold that's required for council approval. Just the...
That doesn't mean we don't want to see it.
Well, you're welcome to review. But it's not something that staff's required to bring to you guys.
Well, but we've already brought you the costs associated with it in the budget. And you approve that. So that's twice. I mean, you can look at the contract, but it's in the budget already. So I'm not... I'm not gonna hold the contract hostage for me. You can look at it if you want.
So what is this here for tonight, Phil? This is for...
To enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Oregon for doing online archiving. So our records can be housed online in a virtual platform. We don't have to keep all of our paper documents.
Yeah, I understand that. The city administrators commented we don't have to bring it to you. I was just wondering.
I can make that comment.
Why was this not mentioned?
I'm sorry?
I just understand why this was brought to us. It's already a done deal?
It's not. Ideas must be entered into by motion of council. This is your action. Entering into the contract after this is approved is not something that has to come to you.
Right.
If that makes sense. This is basically initiating it.
Okay. Do you know anybody else that's signed up for this on Halloween?
Yes. City Milwaukee, Forest Row, Banks, St. Helens, the Dalles, Huronistin. I think maybe I know a city.
And how long have they been?
Just off the top of my head.
And it's just been this year?
No. So the Dalles, I believe, was three years ago. Milwaukee, he's been the one that I've been asking questions for since I started. So he was one of the initial cities that did it. Because I have to ask him after this.
Do you have any new surprises with the cost?
Do all these cities contract with Chavez?
Yes.
Okay.
If you want to... So there's different programs you can do. But entering into the agreement with the Secretary of State and using Chavez Consulting enables you not only to keep your records online, but also to destroy the paper copies. So all of our boxes of financial records that are 75 years, we can put those online and delete or destroy them. All of my meeting packets from the 19... From the 1900s. Those can be scanned online and destroyed. Items like ordinances, resolutions, meeting minutes, those types, I would destroy the paper copies. Those are permanent documents. Property records, payroll stubs.
Payroll stubs, 75 years. Yeah, so some of the employees aren't alive anymore. But with these other...
Well, why would you look that much onto the computer if you don't have to have them? They'll be about 10 years or whatever.
No, you have to keep them for 75 years.
75?
Yeah, so that's... Our whole archive room says, like, destroying 2080. It's ridiculous.
So the question would be, is this the only game in town? Are there competing firms doing this?
Sorry, I didn't explain it clear enough. In order to contract with the state of Oregon, you have to use Chavez Consulting.
So that's basically your...
That is who I would favor because then you also have the added perk of being able to destroy documents. If you go with another firm, you don't get to do that because the Secretary of State and the Department of Justice? The witness? They have approved that system and said, "We trust it so much that you can destroy those records. We will maintain them forever." So you can go onto the platform or onto the web base and type in Counselor McNair. And every agenda or item will show up that has that name or signed by city reporter Kay Condon. So it would show up every document that has her, that phrase in it. Anything for one's overall registry. I mean, you can type in all these different... It's very simple. So user-friendly, it's transparent. It allows the public greater access to their records. They can also be filtered so that our confidential records don't show up in the searchable interface by the public. It's intimidating, but also awesome.
Did you ever... I know we talked about it earlier. Did you ever find out how long a contract you can sign with them? Is it year to year? Or was it locked in for 10 years at a time?
You know, I don't know... I don't remember what the renewal is. You're telling us for Chavez.
Yeah, because I'm not concerned about they raise the rates every year.
I'd have to look and see how far the lock date is on there. There does not look for me tonight.
And my other question for you would be, this is probably gonna require quite a bit of training. Can you talk about that during the initial term there, the free training? Where's the training at? Will it require you to be a bond for quite a bit?
No, they come here. They actually come here and they'll help set up your area and set up your files. And they're available for questions and more assistance. They'll come train staff. The Secretary of State actually does most of the training. So we have access to their professional reference manager.
Thank you. I'm not the only one with questions.
So probably the larger the municipality, Stephanie, the larger the monthly fee and probable...
Actually, once you get to 2,000 users, the fee decreases slightly per user. I mean, obviously, they're still paying a lot more, but there is a cost savings there. We'll never get to 2,000 users. But, yeah. And users aren't people who access it online to search for things. Users are the ones who are entering in that data.
Your motion to pass this resolution to move on with this?
I move that...
Excuse me. Just one moment. I would ask that contingent on approving this, that staff would make available the contract with Chavez.
I object.
What? Pardon me. I have the floor. You said that you would be able to make it available?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I ask.
But I don't think you should make the motion contingent on it. You should just... The mayor should direct staff to distribute the contract.
Okay, that's fine. I can move that.
If you want to hold something, just make it other direction.
I can move with that. All right. Okay, so...
Pardon me. I am concerned when we take the step of moving into the role of city administrator. Yes, it is our role to be supervisors too, but if that is within our normal course of work, I don't believe it's our job to take that step, to be requesting it. I think that if somebody wants to see it, they make an appointment with the city administrator and say, "I'd like to see the contract for quarters assignment. I have questions. I want to make sure I'm comfortable with it." But it's not our job to approve it. It's not our job to supervise it. It's not our job to sign it. Is it? So I don't understand why... I don't understand why the distributing it was as a whole, as a group. Unless... I mean, you don't do that with every other contract.
No.
So I see no reason for that. If Counselor McNair or other counselors have a concern about it, I think that they should go directly to the city administrator and talk with her about it. But I don't think that it's our business to be stepping in.
Mayor, can you comment to that? That's exactly what we agreed to, or I agreed to. I found out what was perfectly okay. How is what she said? If you want to come in and look at it, it'll be made available to you. So I don't see the problem. I think...
Would you like to state your motion in a different way?
I didn't make a motion.
Pardon me?
I didn't make a motion. Counselor Wagner was in the process of making a motion and I interjected. So she can go back and make her motion.
I thought you started a motion with a...
That was not my understanding, sir.
He's thinking you're making a motion about wanting to see it.
I wanted to make a clarification with the city administrator that she would make this... That we would be able to see it. That's all I wanted to do. And you clarified that with me and made it available. So I'm satisfied. I said I was satisfied. I stated that. I know you did. I'm sorry that I...
Okay. I'm going to ask... Go ahead, Stephanie.
I have a question. So if council or counselors are going to come in and review the contract and ask questions and express concerns and inputs about that contract, we wouldn't normally allow a citizen to do that. They would file a paperwork request for a contract. So if council is worried that they would feel differently about the contract, I would request that we not approve this IGA today and that staff bring it back to you guys with all the paperwork because I'm nervous for you guys' interest in IGA and then express doubts or want to back out of it. And this is a formal action. You are signing up for that contract. If you guys are going to feel differently or come be mad about it later, or so, I would be very nervous about that. I'd rather just write all and you guys be happy. I can... If you guys have questions, I'm happy to send it all out. It's well worth the meeting. If you have questions, please email those to me. I can forward it to legal and he can give you those legal answers. But I don't want to do this the wrong way. I'd rather you guys be comfortable with it.
I am concerned that we're setting precedent of getting out of our role. And I appreciate that the city administrator has made that offer, but I don't believe that that's something that would have been done, that would normally be done. It's our job to be approving resolutions for IGA's when contracts fall under the role of a city administrator. And I want to make sure we are very clearly keeping our lines drawn and not stepping over them.
Mayor?
Yes?
If doing due diligence is setting precedent, then so be it.
Thank you.
My point is that...
You did do diligence when you approved the budget. So I'm not spending anything you haven't already approved in the budget. So when you come to piecemealing contracts or diving into each word of a contract that you've already approved the money to be spent by the employees you have, that's what Susan's saying. You're participating in something you don't normally participate in. That's the premise I think she was trying to mention.
JR. For me, if it was just about we approved the budget with a line item that's going to be for something for one year, wouldn't have an issue with it. But this is something that's going to get us into forever. And I don't want to take that too lightly. So I really appreciate seeing the total cost of something before I sign on the line because the vote is signing on the line for me.
But you... In the budget, there is this multiple thing that are for not just that year.
So every budget year, we look at this contract and decide whether we want to go with another year of it?
No, what I'm saying to JR is there's monies in there for this year's expense of things that are for more than one year. So it's not the only thing that you guys allocate money for and I distribute that money for an expense that's for a longer than a year term. That's what I'm saying.
So I have a question for the city of Massacre. When this was passed on the budget, did you present all of this information to us at that time?
It's been passed for two budget cycles. We just never installed and started it. Yep, we went through whole spiel about what we're doing.
Yeah, I talked about it two years ago for the budget committee. At the same time that you guys...
In depth though, I mean, in terms of show us this.
No, I didn't have a contract. But I explained the process, how much it costs, just like I explained the social media archiving, which is not a every-year contract. It's a forever thing that we will have to have as well as we have social media. It's very similar to that. If you're going to have those kinds of records, you must maintain them forever.
I don't think there's any question about that. The question is maintaining the cost, that it doesn't climb precipitously and that we have as a... I don't know how many times in the eight or nine years that I've been involved in this that I've had to go back and something has been presented to us and we have something where the costs have risen and it's become a problem. The idea is to prevent those problems happening before they get there. I mean, I prefer that. And I think that's basically what's being asked by the council is that we might be able to do due diligence, see that... Because honestly, staff hasn't given us... Is not completely informed themselves about the cost or at least that's the impression I've gathered from them. If I'm wrong, I apologize. Well, I don't have to apologize, but I mean, I don't mean to mislead you that you... There's been several times in this discussion where you said, "I'm not sure about the costs, about certain things," so...
I know the cost of this contract. And having that, having this program, if you guys were to choose to cancel it, I don't know how much it costs for us to re-capture those records because we would have to print them all and maintain them in a paper format again.
Well, it's been through another company and all that, right?
Yes, but my concern with that, I guess, would be we would have to go... How do you maintain your approval for destroying records?
I don't think you do. I think you don't.
Yeah.
You'd have to get access to your digital printer and store them again.
Looking at the current contract is going to give us no guarantee of what the fees are going to look like in three years, five years, or 20 years. So I don't think truly looking at the current contract, which has been proven in budget, the money for it, is really going to give us any comfort or change our mind about what this contract's going to do in the future. We can't tell from what the contract says today how much they might consider raising the contract in the future. Potentially, there could be a positive that there's a maximum of 1%, 3%, 30% increase a year. I don't know what it says. But I can't imagine that the city administrator that you have today, based on her record of cost savings and the charging given her, as is in the new evaluation form very clearly, it's her job to watch those dollars. And I certainly believe that if she saw something that was out of line, that she would question it and not sign it. Or have it signed by whoever has required it to sign it. It's her job.
To me, it wasn't a question of the person. It's just a question of the job that I think Counselor Allen brought up, the job that counselors have to do. You have a responsibility to this community to know what it is you're voting on. That's my opinion.
Again, it goes to how far we can go down that road. Every time we get a resolution for an IGA, you're going to want to see everything that's behind that. You know, if there's a contract and then what if they have a subcontract? You want to see that contract too. At what point does it become humorous on our staff to be providing us the information that we have tasked them with doing? You know, micromanagement is a very, very dangerous thing to get into. And in my personal opinion, I think that's what we're doing here.
Well, I would think that anything reasonable. Isn't that a standard that you can go by of reasonable level?
What is reasonable to you may not be reasonable to this...
But then you can stop it. You can stop what I want to do then. Just like I can... We can stop you from doing certain things. That's part of the democracy that we're in. That's how we do things. Need to explain that to you. You're quite aware of that. But the idea that asking questions about something and asking to be able to look at this document prior to entering into it with Chavez, this is a total separate document here. They're not... They're actually... They're interconnected, but they're not one of the same. So why would you review this and you wouldn't review the other?
Because this is required us to do.
An ordinance?
That's why. Let me ask this. With the senior center in Fayetteville, we tasked her with that project. We did not ask to see every single contract that was a subcontract of that. We thought to do a $2 million project, over $2 million project.
Well, I can assure you that within the wastewater treatment agreement, we did. Now, we may not have done it with that particular one, but I can assure you within wastewater, which was $7 million, that the point being is that the counselor... I really don't have a problem with this. I'm speaking on behalf of my fellow counselor because I think he has... I think he has a valid point.
I don't think... I'm sorry. It's your job.
Well, it seems like the issue that came up during budget with Counselor Allen is just coming up here. He didn't like it in budget either.
Well, it did resolve.
That's what I'm saying.
I'd like to respond to that too. I never said I didn't like it. I said I didn't know really much about it. And now that I read this, it kind of brings up a few questions, which not all the... Which none of us really know all the answers. I do have a healthy cautiousness when getting involved with the state of Oregon. All of a sudden, Brunnhilde doesn't own Brunnhilde anymore. You're going to have masters further up the line and telling you what to do. I've worked with people that are deeply involved with the state of Oregon. A lot of the times, it doesn't seem to work out very well for them. Lawsuits incur. You can look at the Oregon Health Plan. Those people have set that website up. There's lawsuits for millions and billions. And it becomes a blame game and they never blame themselves. So that's all I have concerns. It'd be nice to have a couple of year track record with some of the other towns and say, "It's working great. The costs haven't exploded." But they have got you hostage once they've got your data. Just like Massamore. I just... I'm not saying that you guys are... It's probably a great thing. I'm not trying to micromanage. But when you vote for this, you vote for the end outcome. And that's just my personal thing. I really liked what Stephanie said. I was thinking all at once. Lay the chips on the table. If it's a good thing, I'm sure we'll all agree.
But then is there the expectation that every contract you've approved in the budget that I signed needs to come and be for you or just this one?
Well, how many contracts do you get into that never end?
Well, that's what I'm saying. The social media archiving is a never-ending thing.
Well, that's not... Okay.
I mean, do you not understand?
They do end. This one ends in two years. But you would not enter into this kind of contract without the intention of keeping it going forever. It's a complete waste of time.
I understand that.
So they all have...
There's a lot of things like that.
Yeah.
And then there's weird requirements where it doesn't really matter what it costs. We still have to do it, like the audit. Where we tried and tried to get a keep address about it and it's just not out there anymore.
Well, whether it is or not, it wasn't mandated that we do this. It's highly suggested.
I suggested?
No, the state of Oregon, no. It doesn't mandate this at the current time.
What doesn't?
That we go with Chavez and do that.
The only record is it? No, we don't do it.
That's what I'm saying.
No, but you... We're now backtracking for two years. This was the plan. Staff gets it all together and now we're looking at maybe not doing it because I don't know exactly why.
Well, does it cost? And not knowing how much it costs will be, I've heard Counselor McNair say several times, "Council's jealous enough to get the next council in debt."
Okay, so my...
Go ahead.
My argument for this is pretty basic. This will provide records to the public and to staff and reduce staffing costs for doing record requests, reduce costs to maintain records. It will also reduce risk of lawsuits for lost records or unknown records because they will all be known. You know when a record is destroyed because it's meant to end its retention? There's metadata that's still available that shows that this record existed and this is the date that it was destroyed per what was allowed by the state of Oregon. There's no way that someone or everybody that works for the city of Brunnhilde could know every record that is here. It's just... There's no way. So by having all of our records online, we can search by key phrases. We'll have all those records available. The springboard waterline, if we enter that in, we'll have every mention of it from history of its existence. So some lawsuits that maybe could potentially ever happen in the future because there's an unknown document or...
I mean, if we don't supply it. We don't supply it. Even if we don't know it's there, we're not in a file reliable for it if we don't present it to whoever's asking for it.
Yeah.
So that's the concern here is that turnover over the history of people. People label things differently. We don't really know what we have. Exactly. I mean, we know the basics, right? Orders, resolutions, minutes. But like planning files, those are eight different people over the course of 20 years.
Well, I feel your pain. I pull pallet loads of archives off memory levels and search them myself for lawsuits and documentation on lawsuits because we have to hold for 10 years. But even then, you're trying to understand how easy it would be. My only concern was like I said, you're getting into something you can't get out of it. I don't know the cost of it.
Yeah. We could get out of it. We should announce the cost.
Yeah, but you wouldn't want to, would you?
Probably not.
Okay, so moving forward, what does the council wish to do? To table this resolution? For council to get more information? And maybe bring it back to us on the 20th?
I move to approve the resolution of the city of Brunnhilde approving the intergovernmental agreement for electronic records management services.
So a motion's been made to accept this resolution then? Is there a second? No second.
All seconded.
Second's been made?
I'll conclude this session now. What was that then? I want further discussion before we go.
Before we go?
Before we go, yeah. So if we bring, if we turn this resolution down and we wait for the rest of the information, but that's still not a guarantee down the road that we're going to know the answer of them jacking the fee of course. I think the only thing that we could maybe gain would be the exit fee if we decided to come out. I mean, there would be a breaking point to what we'd be willing to pay for the service, surely. You know, I mean, 10 grand a year, we probably don't want, come on and do that. I mean, we're over four grand now a year. So I don't know that waiting is still going to openly resolve the long-term issue. Do you see what I'm getting at? What all we maybe determine is the exit fee.
So what I'm hearing is that potentially, you guys on the table, that's a current motion of a second, but I'm feeling like there's a majority of days. What you're most interested in are the exit costs from the state of Oregon, if there will be any exit costs upon termination. What are the strategies following that exit to regain our data? And whether or not there's an annual increase per annual fee for CHAVs and the cost for terminating from CHAVs? Because we know what the costs are yearly. Do you want to know if there's annual fee that we exit with them as their hit? Is there anything else you're not, that you want to know? Yes.
What would be the fee if you wanted to transfer to another company, just like a mortgage? Just straight over, we're going with this company now.
Yeah, that's what it'd be, strategies for accessing data following termination.
Right, there's a different price for obviously, trying to make them give it all back to you and then probably just transferring over.
Yeah, I'll see what's on there. But we can get that information if that's what's holding you up, if we're feeling comfortable and happy this tonight. Then you kind of keep out of the reviewing the contract, if I bring you the information from the contract, that's not... I don't know. That's a compromise for us. Just run it out there.
Well, that's a workable solution. Do you want to, do you want to rescind your motion? A second?
You know, just the motion's on the floor, you have to vote, but...
You're going to rescind the motion. You can rescind your second.
You can rescind a motion that's already been made and passed.
No, that would be...
Reconsidered.
Reconsideration.
Yes.
But you can rescind your seconding. The motion hasn't been voted on yet.
No, it should. The motion is on the table and seconded.
And seconded.
It should be voted on. There's nothing wrong with it. And his motion, his seconding motion is just saying, I want to see this discussed and go for a vote, not saying I'm in favor of it. That's what your votes are for. It accomplishes the same goal.
Would you state your motion again, please?
I move to approve the resolution of the city of Brunnhilde approving an intergovernmental agreement for electronic records management services.
I have a question for Counsel Wagner. Would you be willing to, we go through the rigmarole of voting on this and if it votes down, to restate the question, the motion with what the city administrator offered?
No.
Okay.
I think if it, if it does die, you just go to the table and...
No.
Somebody else will read that motion.
Yeah.
Call the roll.
Call the roll, please, Stephanie.
Okay. Counselor Allen?
Nay.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor McNair?
Nay.
Mayor Horner?
Nay.
Counselor what?
Aye.
Motion failed.
So I guess we need to make a recommendation. We table this until the next meeting and get further information that the city's staff can bring to us so that possibly we can get this moving forward. So you can answer the questions. Do you feel confident with it?
I liked what the city administrator said about five minutes ago. Anyone like to make a motion? Table this?
I think I just...
What was it?
Did you say? I think I just did.
Okay, is there a second?
No second.
Second's been made, table the resolution. Would you call roll, please, Stephanie?
Mayor Horner?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor McNair?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Nay.
Counselor what?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Resolution 2020-09, a resolution of the city of Brunnhilde adopting a policy on the extension of water service outside of city boundaries and outside the city urban growth boundary. Page 17 through 19.
Okay, I brought you guys this resolution as well. This is accomplishing what you guys requested of several work sessions in kind of recent history, being the year before it's open. So I worked extensively with the city attorney to draft this resolution and we feel confident that this accomplishes what you guys want to do and it's within the city's right to do so.
Now, they're going to have to bring it to campus.
Okay. You did, you did.
I didn't, well, she sent this out, so I didn't have a version to, I didn't send you out a good version.
But I, yeah. That reporter administrator went through this, whether we, I think we both had a couple items that is, oh geez, looks better, yeah. Plus the second from the bottom, whereas...
Where you at, what section?
Page 17. Second, whereas from the bottom. I think we had a question around the water supplies are not adequate to serve additional areas. You're wondering if that was legal wobble general, but it's really not reality.
I believe it's legal terminology giving you the right to say, we're not going to provide it to anybody else, but I can ask him if we can remove it?
I mean, it looks like that would be a point that could get challenged because that's not really the truth. Where you have the water is that we don't wish to extend water outside the city.
So the issue you have is with the last line?
Yeah, the line, not adequate to serve additional areas.
For 10 months out of the year, we have adequate supply and we don't have to pay.
But at some point in the course of the year, we do suffer shortages to the point where we...
It's just blanket statements, the water supplies are not adequate to serve additional areas, when a good chunk of the time, that's not a true statement. So that's what Counselor Wagner's like, eh.
Well, and reality is too, the city can double the supply, we have the water supply for that. We would still go in to curtail it when curtailing is necessary, so...
But the cubic feet project we have is sufficient for...
You had a couple of things, Dan?
Yeah, let's see. On section three, A, we had a question, so that's undeveloped properties, urban growth boundary water service, making granted, owner of the property had started annexation process, entered into agreement with the city, complete annexation within a specified time. We have a question though, can we, can we have somebody annex in that forms an island in urban growth area?
I'm sorry, well, they sent him out, but he's on vacation. What was the question?
The question is, can we cause somebody to annex in and create an island within urban growth boundary?
If there's a lot of property out there, they sent the thing to Matt, but he wasn't...
Yeah, so I sent him a couple of questions leading up to this. And I know we can force annex an island or donut hole, whatever you want to call it, but out of our last discussion, we could create an island, but it was perceived as a bad thing to do because then it's kind of a sneaky way for the city to maybe annex this top part and then we create a donut and then three years down the road, when people aren't paying attention, we're going to force annex the rest of it.
I mean, in this situation, we're required to have it supplied. I mean, basically, the question was, I thought, we had to be contiguous to existing city limits line and if we don't have to, then this language can stand. Because there could be a willing participant here, we're not forcing them in.
I don't fully understand the question. Are you asking if we can annex somebody who's not touching the city?
Yeah, but it says within the group, urban growth boundary, and we have those ones down, the south of down, if the furthest out one wanted city water, agreed to annex, could they do it by themselves without them?
Without them.
Okay, so this doesn't state that it has to be...
Take yours.
Yes.
But that would fall back to annexation law. So in the greater scheme of things, you guys are talking about taking all that out and you're bringing in the boot. All of that touches the city on one side or the other, so it could be annexed into the city.
Every property owned in within?
Everyone does. Okay?
Well, and that was to my point on our discussion, Dorisette, would be when we're looking at urban growth boundaries, saying if we're going to keep this language in there, then do we get a little more creative of the urban growth boundary to ensure that we're not bringing in a property? But then we're going to be forced to provide them water, but we can't make them annex.
Right.
And that's kind of the trust over issue. We want people annexed into the cities.
So the way that I talked about this with the city attorney, the way that this is worded, is they wouldn't be able to get water unless they're annexing to the city right now. So if I filed my application, I've been approved, it might not have to vote because if I'm in the urban growth boundary and I want to be annexed, they have the right to do so, the city cannot deny it. I asked the city planner, he replied that that is the truth, then I'm just saying, I'm waiting for the law, the description of our, the planning files to be finished and recorded with the county, then we can go ahead and get going on providing that water service.
So what if that person's down here?
Yeah.
What if they're this person right here?
That probably do not annex unless they are touching the city.
Okay, so that first one needs to say something about touching the city then?
Oh.
Because if it's them and it makes it true, does that say, see what I'm saying? It doesn't say anything...
Same way you would start the annexation process, you men. They can't. They would not qualify. The state of Oregon, you cannot annex unless you're touching the city in the UGB.
So we should have a sentence in there that says they must qualify to be able to...
That's what I would say, something along the lines, what's it, they meet the standards of land use somewhat.
So qualified and have started?
Yeah. That would fall to work. Of course, we want that passed by the people.
Yeah, and the planner. Appreciate your effort, Stephanie.
I also ask, because you guys had expressed interest in offering a potential carrot to that property to be able to get connection in order to agree to be outside the UGB. Properties inside the UGB do not get to have a stay so, they're not legally required to be provided a vote to be removed from the UGB. So we don't have to provide that carrot.
Six to seven, you can correct that.
You guys expressed interest in maybe providing an incentive for a property to agree to be removed from the UGB. We don't have to do that.
So we could...
They don't get to deny it. Correct.
Okay, that solves that issue. Another one, section, section three and E. Can you explain, Stephanie, what that, that's...
We thought it was two different things. What's your question? What is water service to property outside the city unless it's just supplied directly by the city, shall be by contract? Because this whole thing's talking about not supplying water outside the city, so are we saying that the current hookups need to have a contract?
Yes, but also this allows us to, we're further down, the ones that we are contractually obligated to provide service to. This allows us to enter into that contract. So the contract, we had talked about creating another utility account application where it's them agreeing to annex or having something that's recorded on their property. Remember that discussion? Where they agreed to, basically kind of waiver of remembrance, saying, when I'm able or connected to the city UGB, I agree to not vote against being annexed. This allows us to have that contract and to force them to record it.
So there's somebody that's, there's a property that falls under A and they're, well, no, because that person's annexing. So that's the thing that they don't make them figure out. Who is, where is that property?
Water service to property outside the city limits, sorry, which is supplied directly by city, shall be by contract. So this is, this one, sorry, I was in a different spot, I'm further down. This one, we had talked about having a different utility application, I think is what this one was. So me, them, the city having to water, I would sign a different utility account application.
Going through it, right? We wouldn't come back and get these guys that already have that.
Well, technically, I already did. In the seventies, my house was connected.
You signed what?
A contract.
But all of them didn't?
I'm not sure.
So we wouldn't go back on people? So who really is this new property that's outside that's by contract? That's what confused, that's how it reads, is like...
So you're saying you want this to be its own section? Does that work? Because you're confused, you don't want us to be connected to that? Which is the one that I say we shall be...
This saying we can also charge higher rates? We want to, this whole resolution avoiding connecting them outside the city.
Yeah.
And I don't know.
What do we do about sewer? We're making them come in, as soon as they hook up water, they're clear out somewhere. You're going to put a septic system in, build a house, two or three people, then all of a sudden, they're in the city, you have septic systems in our city.
So we do have, we, the last septic system just failed a couple of years ago. If you're within 250 feet, the county's going to make you connect. If you're within 250 feet of a sewer anyway.
Unless the city outright denies it.
Right. Unless the city outright denies it, further out than 250 feet, the county is allowing septic, so that's just a...
So we got 10 or 12 houses, all of a sudden connect, and then they connect and it's all in the city, then they got to tear all these septic systems and run them main down the area. I mean, shouldn't we address the sewer and water at the same time?
Well, no, because there's a little water sewer that's outside the city. And this...
Obviously, you're bringing them in, you're annexing them in, right? I mean, as soon as you...
That's addressed a little bit.
Isn't there a function there putting in water to code and isn't that put sewer to code?
Yeah.
Right, but we're not, it doesn't state that. And you could have a septic, we've got a lot of people, right, it's probably urban growth boundary, or right now, on water, but not on septic.
Well, I think that's in the poll work standards, because it addresses how you would have to commission your well also.
Correct.
Is that the poll work standard?
But I understand, we're limiting connections, you know, in the city limits and urban growth boundary. Urban growth boundary is as far as we're going with this document. Anybody outside the urban growth boundary?
Well, no, not entirely. Later...
Other than contractual obligations?
Yeah.
That's your second? Yeah. I mean, we do have contractual obligations that we're, you know, have to honor, but other than that, so we already have an agreement with the county, we will provide water and sewer into any of our urban growth boundaries. What we're firming up here is, you're going to annex into the city if you want that service. We're no longer letting your city's urban growth boundary... We're no longer letting your city urban growth boundary get the services and not annex in. Right, but a property, just say, just because of maps here, a property wants to build a house right here, and the sewer line stops up here, and you want to come in, we give them permission to put water in?
No, this doesn't allow that.
And they're in the urban growth boundary, and maybe all the, I guess they'd all have to come in at once, and then you got to do sewer and everything, right?
They're allowed to come in at once.
We would have went spider webs out there, just city water currently, is that correct?
There's, the furthest one is the front, is the front property. Yeah, on Highway 27.
Yeah, I just didn't see anything here about sewer, but?
No.
Right, but, with the water, the access to the water's kind of really going to be the controlling document. I mean, we're not going to provide, you know, we have an obligation up here, that's why we're providing a law, we moved that out of the urban growth boundary down there. I mean, that's a future discussion, but, and that's why we're going to be a little more strategic in what we're bringing in. We've already talked about where our infrastructure's at, and, you know, so, but, kind of the water, kind of control go processes. They're not going to build a house without water. They can't put a well in the city limits, I don't know about urban growth boundary, probably not on that, but they can't, in the city, get water. You can't put a well in the urban growth boundary?
You can't put a well in the city limits?
In the city limits, oh, you said urban growth, well, I wasn't sure.
He doesn't know about that.
You can't see my expression, my questioning expression. But yeah, this, this letter, E, for the app, I'm not sure where, if we need that in there?
Well, I think you'd want to, the city may charge a higher rate, I think the app, if you eliminated the first sentence, it just left, the city may charge a higher rate for utilities outside the city limits, is set by resolution, upon change of ownership of a property, a new contract must be signed before the water will be restored. But that, that's the weird thing, is it doesn't, it's not only referencing the ones that were contractually obligated to, it just says, supply directly, must be under contract.
And do we do that, when they change ownerships?
Well, I think it would hurt in the boot, right? If anyone connected in the boot, and is touching the city, and annexing in, or whatever. But it's just weird, because it doesn't relate to something specific. So that's why we're confused by it.
Well, when you hook up the water, even if you're within the city limits, don't you basically, in essence, I'm not saying it's a formal contract, but aren't you signing a contract when you come in here and you put down, say, deposit for, and then you go through the, the different things that you're required not to do, like mess with me, or, that's basically a contract that you're engaging in there.
Yeah. But I guess you could see it as a water utility application. If the contract we're referencing, then that's not such a big deal, if that's the contract we're referencing. Because each new ownership does have to sign a new contract, but this is listing properties outside the city limits, which is where the confusion comes in.
Seems like we had a resolution to that the other day, but I can't remember.
I know, and I know that my highlighted version of growing. But maybe it's just?
And we thought that was just the ones that were under contractual obligation we were talking to.
This section's for any further connections in the UGV. So this is saying that they can only get water if they're in the process of getting annexed into the city. That's what this section three is for. So you have to meet, so for section A, then you have to do section C, then it would be section B and E. So all those are qualified. Or if you were in section B, then it'd be D through E. This one's specific to the UGV.
Yeah, each one's kind of their own separate, you don't have to meet all the requirements, you have to just meet their requirement, A, B, E.
It'll be A.
They gotta do, they gotta do C.
And D and E.
I'm thinking E for the contractual.
No, this one is, if I'm, so if my house right now, or the property next to me, that goes in the process of being annexed, so I was already through the public hearing process, it was just waiting to be recorded, I could come in, sign up for my account, pay my SDCs, submit my plans, and move forward with getting the water meter installed.
But you're currently not in the city, not in urban growth boundary?
No, I am. I'm in the UGV.
Huh?
In this scenario.
Oh, in this scenario.
Or a scenario.
Well, yeah, but I'm talking, not in this scenario.
What do you mean? Like, if the group wasn't closed, then?
Yeah.
If it wasn't UGV?
Correct.
Then they're not in this, this is property in the UGV, section three. So?
Oh, yeah, okay, I got you, you're in there.
So, under this?
Okay, you gotta be in the urban growth.
Yeah. So it doesn't affect me so much that I have to be?
Yeah, that's the call, but it's up front, up top.
Yeah.
Urban, urban growth, but they're outside the city limits. But still, it almost looks like we're allowing water, though that's you, your example right now, is what this one is, is, well, you're not in urban growth boundary.
No, but this is scenario.
So somebody that would be in urban growth boundary, they're in the back, but they're in the back, is what it looks like.
And crossing across somebody else's property with the utilities and a sewer main, and?
Well, this would not allow for it, because you must be able to, and be approved for annexation, otherwise you do not get water. You're annexing. The intent is, no more connections outside the city, unless the city has already signed a contract, like someone's, this water main on easy. Unless you are annexing to the city, you do not get water. No.
But it doesn't say that there?
Yes, it does. For undeveloped property that is in the urban growth boundary, water service may be granted if the owner of the property has started, and we have one, and qualifies for, the annexation process, and entered into an agreement with the city to complete the annexation within a specified timeframe. So it's a done deal, otherwise you do not get water.
So I think what we proposed, failed to fix it, was that it was like, A for undeveloped property was a heading, C, D, E, B, C, D, E. Because the bottom header relates to the two top, and the way they're all lined up like that, is not saying if you're developed, if you're undeveloped, you do this, 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 and this, and if you're developed, you do this, 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 and this. That's where it looks confusing, you get what I'm saying?
Right.
Because A and B are two separate, like, subheadings, and B, C.
Yeah, so A would help, I, for 1, 2, 3, and then B would help, 1, 2, 3, yes.
Yeah.
That's where, because otherwise, E seems like it's floating out there by itself, and not a requirement of any of the above, that sucks.
That's all.
Yeah. Okay.
What's that mean to B, if property owners are not proceeding with any land use permits? What if they start building, and they draw, they drill several dry wells? And then they say, wait a minute?
They want to be out there.
What if they change their mind, want to come into the city at that point?
So the intent of this one, can I explain it, because I did it with the city attorney?
Okay.
So the intent of adding the land use permits is so that somebody's not in the process of building a house in the county, because you're following the county's standards, and then you get annexed into the city, and now you're following the city's standards. So to make it so that that could never happen. Because we have drastically different regulations, design standards.
So before you build a house, and it's on vacant piece property within the UGV, if you want city water, you need to follow this, you can't be half-billed and then want water.
Yeah, I wonder how people would know that?
Well, if they do their due diligence, they call up here, lots of people call up here.
And a resolution would be, they would have to then put infrastructure that follows the city building code. They want the water, so it's, they're, they're not harmed, they just have to, I mean, they're going to think they're armed, because they're going to think they're right.
Essentially, we have, like, we ask the lone viral, let's know, and they're, right, properties, because we, we're at the main, and that's your deal. The lone one is the guy's right way.
I had one other question. It was under section five, comprehensive plan, and we're specifically talking about, basically, no new connection through the key, the road transmission main, or North, Highway North, transmission main outside the city limits are prohibited. So, did we talk about that north line, we needed to give them a certain length of time for, if that's a reimbursement?
Yeah, but that will, that will fall under, this is in here for when their contractual obligation is met.
Oh, what's the contractual obligation?
So we know that, like, eight connections contractually have a time limit, we're asked forever to build this, like, on Sony Point State there, easy there. They have four connections, doesn't matter what time. The North Highway one has a time limit, so those are both contractual obligations. But when they run out of time, then they fall under, not, no more, I'm there.
I just want to make sure we're all?
Just so that we can mark it in time, but they still be served under that, until they're, it runs out.
Can you give that, one that, I've never, first time I've ever heard that. What's the date of the?
I'd have to go, I don't have it in my head, I just know there is a certain, there are so many years to recoup their investment. I'd have to look it up. It's following that, but I don't?
Four years. Four years.
It's like 15 or something, but it was put in nine, 10 years ago, so, maybe even longer.
Well, that would be more, I have to dig that one up, make sure we remember.
And the weird part is, is the original investors have sold it. So, it doesn't re-extend with the new owner of that property that also the line came with, so.
Just another reason not to do this?
Right.
Yeah. Counselor, that's probably a question for Stephanie, maybe Joseph. A and B end with specified timeframe. What is the specified timeframe? Just whatever you guys figure it takes to get it done?
The annexation?
Yeah.
So like, it's going to report with the county within two weeks, three weeks, the processes? It would be on a case-by-case basis?
Well, you, so the different plan, land use, planning actions have legal amounts of time you have to allow them. So that's why it's specified timeframe, because you don't know which way you're doing it, if they have the 45 days, the 60 days, the 90 days, they'll have a different thing depending on what they're doing. Because there's so many days for us to receive it and return it back to them, so many days for them to record it, and get the records back, so that's why you don't want to put a specific, I mean, you could put, like, specified time, like, timeframe, no longer than some amount of time, like, 180 days or something, if that makes council feel better.
I didn't quite follow that, but were we scratching the outside city limits, that whole line, since the whole point was the stop running to the outside of the city limits? Are we scratching the outside city limits in C? Since it's charged a higher rate?
In E, I mean?
In E, sorry.
No, I think what we're doing is, we're making A for undeveloped properties, and the 1, 2, 3, and B, and the 1, 2, 3. So C, D, and E would be 1, 2, 3 under the undeveloped and the developed, does really make it clear.
Yeah, it's clear what made, part of those, those, you have to hit all those requirements.
And we're adding the words, and qualified and have started the annexation process.
Yeah, you got to have a qualified piece of property to annex in.
Yeah, correct.
The other one, annexing causes an island for everybody else, right?
Right.
And then, were we going to delete the first sentence in E?
No, we're keeping it, then we're separating the?
Keeping it?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you're adding qualified for, and have started for the annexation process in A, you can have it be also?
Yes. Okay. Then we'll double check with legal and planning to make sure they don't have specific language that says the same thing that they like to use.
So we could probably table this one, bring you back your plain version.
Yeah.
And double check your question on the second of the last warehouse, could have not had, the other version.
So is that what we're going to do? Yeah. Well, we're going to need a plain version here. Unless we want to land in all the, well, we don't, we can't, because we don't have legal?
Two amendments, not just the plan.
Yeah.
So you just need a recommendation to table?
Motion.
Motion to table, I'll make a motion to table this to the next.
Sure, second?
I'll say it.
Second's been made, to table this, just some information. Stephanie, you want to call roll, please?
Okay, Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor up there?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Mayor Ward?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Ordinance 923, an ordinance of the City of Renonia reducing the speed limit on selected non arterial streets. Case 20. Well, I think you got to put it in the paper, or you received nothing?
I didn't.
I heard nothing?
Did not.
There's been no Facebook posts?
No.
You didn't make it public? Yes, I did, I gave it the opportunity. So does anybody have an issue with it? Because I might own it this time. Nope?
I have a motion to?
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 923, an ordinance of the City of Renonia reducing the speed limit on selected non arterial streets.
Would any council write this ordinance to be read and call?
No.
For real stuff? Check. This is the first reading by title only, in ordinance number 923, an ordinance of the City of Renonia reducing the speed limit on selected non arterial streets. There it is.
No, nearly did it.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, jumping to them. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Second's been made. Want to call the roll first, Stephanie?
Yeah.
I'm all with you.
Counselor, air?
I know you get the hell out of here.
Counselor McNair?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Mayor Ward?
Aye.
Motion carried. Are you guys wanting us to come back to you again, or do you want to perform a second reading also?
Yes, please. Second reading also, in my?
Do you mean to say Wachfield first, or you want to make the motion first?
Do you want me to make a motion that we have a second reading? What?
I'll do my second reading, and then you can make a motion to approve it.
Okay.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 923, by title only, an ordinance of the City of Renonia reducing the speed limit on selected non arterial streets.
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 923, ordinance of the City of Renonia reducing the speed limit on selected non arterial streets.
I'll say it. Second's been made, call roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Mayor Ward?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor McNair?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie.
When's the ordinance take effect?
In 30 days.
30.
Okay, correspondence, we have two corresponding letters tonight, and the first one? is addressed to Joseph Mitchell and city council members.
So I received this letter in April, and it's a request from Mrs. Bernardi about a property that her mother sold to the city.
Excuse me. I think we have a potential conflict of interest, so.
Okay.
I'll include myself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That her mother sold this to her section of this property to the city in, I think, nineteen eighty-six. Nineteen eighty-six, in October. So this letter is, and the current agreement states that, let's read it. Reserving to the grandeur who is Mr. Eleanor Thompson for her lifetime the right to pass her horses on the above described property so long as such use does not interfere with the grandeur's operation of his water treatment plant or materially affect the water supplies to such treatment plant. So the letter you'll see from Mrs. Bernardi, they would like to lease the property back. The city's probably not gonna do that. As you can see from this map, the highlighted area includes Washington Avenue is the street that runs right in front of the water plant. The water plant and the raw water tank and the little side building, those buildings right there in the center are the current water plant. The cleanout is behind that towards the river, and the section that was purchased from Ms. Thompson is kind of a longer rectangle section to the right of the water plant. Currently, those are all collapsed into one parcel within the county, so they're not individual parcels of land anymore that could be agreed upon. And as you can see, there's a public right of way, a platted alley that runs through the middle of that. And given easements on that to Mr. Weller, who is also a relative of Eleanor Thompson and Mrs. Bernardi. The concern for the Bernardi family is they like the river access, the woman who sold us the land is getting older, and they're concerned they won't have the river access there. For reasons we probably would not, we paid fair market value for the land as a city in nineteen eighty-six. And potentially, if there was any need to move the water plant because of flood plain, that, to the right of it, is where we would probably move it, up away from the river. So most of that is flood, floodway kind of in the lower portion, towards the river, and A, E, outside of that. So I was just bringing this to you in correspondence. Simultaneously with this letter I received from her, I received a request from the other vein of the family, wanting to see the current, wanting to see the purchase agreement, so I believe there was some sort of discrepancy or issue between the parties in the family. So since we have a current easement on it, we potentially would use it if the water plant had to be expanded or needed to move somewhat for flood, the city's not going to lease it. Currently, there's a gate closing anyone from accessing, there's a public right of way alley which people can go down there, the family can continue to do that like they have been until we need to gate it off for security or for use. And Mrs. Thompson is still alive, so she still has the right to pass her horses there and access that property until she's no longer with us, so.
Would you be so kind as to show me exactly, this is the right of way right here, the dark blue?
So this is the right of way, runs right here. This is the Thompson piece. The easement comes down this right of way, makes a bee line, and goes into the Weller property up here.
So the property question is this entire piece or just?
This entire piece is what was sold to us.
Uh huh.
It's all one piece now. It, all the parcels are combined into one piece, and you click on one tax parcel, it's all of these together.
Okay, but the piece that they wanna, they wanna, they're interested in is essentially that, this area? Yeah.
Which we couldn't do because we already granted someone an access easement over it.
Because, well, I just wanted.
They have it up above, yeah. Can you tell me this direction? I should have drawn it on there. So here's the easement. This is the parcel they would want.
It's too big.
This is where she has the location there. I mean, this one makes sense to me. Yes, so there's a fence that runs along.
This one, to help yourself.
And easement is between. Yes, that skinny little thing, and it crosses over that piece. And then, okay, go ahead, the button, the question is on there. Sorry, I should have just done it. So here's the easement road, goes like this into this property, and this is the piece they would wanna lease, but it's, we've already given an easement over it. So it's not really able to be broken up. Do you want me to draw this?
Sure. So Eleanor's still alive. Hopefully gonna be for quite some time, stay out with me. I think this is a question for future councils. But you agree?
I agree.
So what's the questions for?
I said I think this is a question for future councils, since the person that originally we're in, well, I guess, we do have somewhat of a contractual obligation in that property stipulated that she be allowed to use it. Is that correct?
That she specifically be allowed to?
Right, Mrs. Thompson, yeah. So she's still alive.
Well, and we've granted an easement.
Yeah, right through it.
Right through, so trying to back out of the easement we've given is not the city. So I'm going to nicely say that the city is not interested in leasing back the property that currently has an agricultural easement contract, land use, kind of explain to the person why we can't lease it back.
And personally, we're currently.
In the contract.
Still alive as well, so.
But she did ask if it was coming to council, because I didn't, when I read, the mayor, Joseph Mitchell, that she told me, maybe that I was the mayor, which is great. I didn't, when I read, it was kind of old families were coming at me with their requests, and I didn't see the city council members, like I just opened it, read it, and it was dealing with her and others. So I apologize if I'm not getting it to you guys sooner, to see it in person. So my second one, is it really an action for council, or it's more of a?
Informative.
Informative of where we're going with this idea? So the old easement is a retired, as you'll see, the retired, just working and participating and helping with the CZ trail. And he's working on kind of a longer term sign, and once COVID, it, it kind of got stalled because really, he wants an informational sign at Anderson Park, a permanent one, that would have the different vendors in town to kind of remind bicycle list on the linear trail, either coming from the base Renonia or the CZ, that a hub at Anderson Park will be currently available, so we'd do one directly next to it. Kind of what Park had talked about for forever, where it outlines what services and businesses run the downtown for, with a small map with dots that correlate to the different businesses. The permanent sign would potentially have shingles, so if a business went out of business, you could remove the shingles. That's not what's required tonight, that's a longer term thing coming to parks and then coming to city council for approval. And a bigger discussion about an end of the Banks Renonia linear trail, trailhead idea at Anderson Park, kind of using our piece of property there. What I'm bringing to you guys for information tonight is the linear trail, Banks Renonia and the Washington County Visitor Association allowed Banks to put up the sign, you can see on their second page that's here, that just specifically, this would be temporary, we'd be putting it up on a steel post next to the current Washington County Visitor Association hub, that would just lead people during this time, before we have a permanent sign, to food establishments or grocery store type establishments for food service takeout. You can see Banks put one that says, you know, the Banks Renonia linear trail, please support these local businesses during your visit, they are open to serve you with takeout and soon limited seating. So it's kind of COVID based. We have eleven food establishments that Dale's gonna be contacting, so RNS, Dale plate, not our Dale, RNS, Mini Mart, Subway, Blue House, Black Iron Grill, Black Bear Coffee, Barolino's, Cedar Side, and all on top. And then if Block Man, we don't know exactly where that's at. But if they, basically, it would just show their logo, their address, and a phone number, or an email, or if they had like an app address, whatever the vendor would want there. And you'd just be posting it on a post next to the current hub station, and then basically, Dale has a line to someone that's willing to do the graphic work for free, and then ultimately, the different vendors would kick into the ninety dollars, which is for the sign. So I just wanted you guys to know, that's what we're working on. Ultimately, there's a bigger discussion for when the CZ trail connects and wayfinding signs and what their signage will look like, and whether or not we get a trailhead at Anderson, and what's that, they have a permanent, all of that's a discussion that's happening within the CZ trail board, but is not cooked enough to bring it to our parks committee or to you guys for approval to designate anything, uh, trailhead.
Is it possible to add a Saturday market, um, you know, Saturday, ten to May, October?
I could, I could definitely ask him, yeah.
That might bring more people to?
Do you know if they, they have food, whether it's like fresh or pretties, or they're like, yeah.
Yes, something.
Okay.
Tell, but they have to.
Well, I mean, you can't. Right. And this is kind of by, they don't have to participate in things, he's just trying to get people that are out fighting in these businesses, they're kind of hurting. And Banks has seen a lot of good report, permanent people coming in and saying, oh, it's on the side of the trailhead, and dairy grass sandwich, or, so I think that'll be good, it's a good, Banks are a thought, so to speak, for the vendors.
I think we've talked, talked about a vendor sign before, so.
Yeah, and then ultimately, the permanent one would have the library, museum, you know, the hardware stores, different categories, and have it be more color coded, so all the restaurants on the map are gonna be this color, all the service things are gonna be this color, community places like the library or the museum are this color. So it's gonna be a cool idea once they kind of get it flushed out and bring it to parks, who's already channeling that. And then ultimately, the benefit is, is that if it becomes part of that CZ trail, if there's funding in there, which we wouldn't have to do out of pocket to get some, some movement for our local businesses, so. But I just wanted to give you guys a heads up, so if you see, or something in the business community says, I was approached by this guy, is it for real? I mean, I'm gonna be sending him something too, but just so you guys know, oh yeah, I saw him, that seemed to work in Banks, you should go for it, whatever. So that's what I have from my other correspondence. And Rick's been going to the CZ meetings, that's how Dale knew Renonia didn't have something like that, and so it's good to have people connected that are, I mean, Mike and Tony live here, but they're not coming in to see me, but it's fine, so it worked out good.
Thank you, Joseph.
Yeah.
Okay, items from the mayor, counselors, and city administrator. I don't have anything right this time, any counselors have anything, before we go on to the city administrator report? Go ahead.
I've been getting a few phone calls, people have concerns up on North Louisiana, about Joseph about some of the concerns, one person brought, I haven't had a person call since then. You know, it's, I think we're kind of targeting our growth in that area, and so it's growing concerns, and there's some legitimate concerns, stormwater is probably one, and then also the road, you know, contractors are tearing stuff up, and, you know, we gotta make sure the road lease gets put back to the way it was before they tore it up, and so there's, I guess, all I can say is, you know, a little more heightened awareness, and there's probably a few issues, we as a city, probably need to kick back down to the committees or whatever, need to kind of be looking at and working through as that grows, so we grow it properly and keep everything code over there. But some of our past mistakes is here to be thrown at us, and they're finding we're really sure people that we took things in place to not do that again, and not have a bad development.
Can you, is it just a water runoff, or was there other issues? You said codes, so I was kind of wanting to, I'm kind of having a loop.
Well, you know, well, you know, the water runoff, you know, kind of right now, you know, houses have been coked here and there, and we're a little bit haphazard. Some of that because we know we're probably gonna be coming in behind that and doing a full street improvement.
Well, so, so short of a subdivision, they classify it as a subdivision, our current code doesn't have a requirement that requires them to do anything all along the route, these home builders. So they do sign levers over mom's rents, right, because they'll participate when the city was in sidewalk, they will go to him to approve the district, that kind of document is required. The issue up there is there was one builder that was building three homes, still a lot of subdivision, and he upgraded I Street, put all the infrastructure in for his three lots and three lots across the street. And it was messy up there, and people were used to no one in their backyard, and used to a dirt trail they were walking down on Oregon that got messed up, because he was required to put a hammerhead in there, so he stopped pile of rock there, and then they were all like, well, what about when you're not blocking now? So there's a lot of upheaval about just change, not necessarily, you know, and then it was like, for a while, it was an everyday call, well, when is it gonna be required to be done? Well, there isn't a deadline for someone to do it, they just have to do all the parts. And so he said, no, we assured people, he's gonna have to put that, he's gonna have to smooth that out, and ultimately, he did all those things, but it's still just the, not my backyard kind of thing. I mean, we had people calling that his porta potty was too close to their fence, and it was getting kind of ridiculous, so ultimately, he moved the porta potty and tried to be a good neighbor, but it was like, he could do no right, apparently, that we were requiring all the required things.
So the one concern, though, is, is we don't really have a master stormwater plan right there. They're kind of digging ditches here and there, and it's going, a lot of it's going down that road. The concern is, you know, where does it go from there? I might even watch. So you can develop a whole area, you can do three at a time, and you never call it development, is that kind of what you're saying? Yeah, that's kind of what's going on.
You can.
Now, there's twelve lots, the old former trade park is all for sale right now, twelve, there's twelve lots in there, but they get sold.
He has a, he has an engineered stormwater plan.
Well, within, we're doing it on site, but then it still goes somewhere.
Our plan also, it also, yeah, our plan is.
It also, yeah, our plan is missing also, but it does address how the effects are downstream.
Yeah, where it's going from that one.
Yeah.
If some of that thing goes off toward Oregon and here, there's just kind of a swamp down there.
It mostly goes down that Oregon and goes to my property, and then skirts down to the pond that's off Riverside and, that's where it all goes.
Well, there should be a drainage here, but I don't think there's any formalized there. And there's, you know, there again, there's a little sensitive, we just dump water on the neighbor, that's, you know, and we've got into problems with that, and then the neighbor's like, "Hey, you know, I've got all this extra water now."
Yeah.
And something we got to be aware of.
Yeah, I mean, a stormwater plan for that area and what we can establish in the right way is definitely something.
Right.
We should be looking at doing.
Yeah, but I assume we have a street that's plowed down there.
Oh yeah, they're all plowed in right ways all the way. All the letter streets go to Oregon and go down.
So is that a solution that, of course, we have to walk to there to get the street?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, as long as it's not developed, I guess, unless the landlord is impacted, he's trying to grow trees, and we're dumping a bunch of water on them, it's, you know, it won't grow trees, and then you could have a problem there.
Which landlord are you talking about?
Well, I'm not sure, I mean, across from Helens, it seems like it goes down there and then goes to east towards Stephanie's.
Yeah. Well, this might be something that you guys could address if you ultimately decide to bring that area into the CBG, because it's the county right now, so what Kansas City do up there? There's not right ways that go inside food.
But Oregon, Louisiana, that impact, they're all within the city, so.
Yeah, but, sorry, we're fighting this top middle, like, the problem is what I'm saying.
Yeah, you know, we go out there.
Right.
So we've been talking about a comprehensive stormwater plan for the last four or five years. I've lost track of what the reason why we're not, we don't charge SDCs for it.
Right.
And that's one of the driving forces that include.
Have the money there.
Yeah. What's holding us up from that?
Money.
Grant money, or?
Well, we can easily go for grants, but the risk is, is that we have some compounding problems we really would want to rather go for that grant money for, for the wastewater, stormwater wastewater through CBG, is the Bellagio, is Plaza, and all that over there.
Watch you.
That's what's on the plate to go for.
What's our master plan say that we spent $140,000, $100,000 on? Within that plan, is there anything that?
No, because they're all really specific. So the Water Master Plan only addresses water supply, new reservoir, it does not.
Stormwater.
It doesn't interregal. So what we're currently doing is the mapping, trying to get all those sewer, stormwater, where it's disjointed, the connectivity, all of that laid out, so that when we go for a grant, we don't pay someone to do that work that our guys can easily do. Also, I think it's a manhole mapping. And I don't know, I guess since we've been in COVID, and I think I've only shown it to Council Web, that we came up with a manhole inspection protocol, and like different stuff, and fillable forms, and range finders, and they do the depth, and there are pipes coming in, so we're mapping with our new public works workers, a ton of everything.
So what's the roadmap for getting to a point where we can be targeting SDCs for this?
You mean increase SDCs? Yeah.
No, we don't.
I think we've charged what, we charged a non-hemant fee.
So we do have an SDC?
Like 600.
Yeah.
Really too small for what it is. You could do an SDC comparative, you don't have to do a big study and pay that much money, you could compare it with other, like towns, and increase the SDC. We talked a while ago about doing one, a stormwater displacement fee based on your roof side of that hangup.
Right.
So we've just never really had the guts to pull it in on any.
Does the smoke testing fall into that?
No, because it's all sewer, I mean.
It does.
Well, but it doesn't, you want to pay for it with sewer funds as INI, instead of the limited funds that are actually out there for stormwater. You want to clean that, get that into capacity and sewer and overflow from INI, and make it a sewer problem, because it's much more attractive to fund gross stuff spewing out of manhole than it is to fund rainwater going down a ditch.
Are we even, are we even supposed to be having rainwater going into our sewer system?
No, we're not.
So essentially.
But Louisiana wouldn't be, because it's currently not, they're not discharging it into the sewer the way we know.
Right. Well, I was just talking about comprehensive, citywide. We've been talking about this for a long time.
No, and that's, so we contacted CBG, which is doing wastewater grant funding, and what they talked to us about, they were like, "Hey, we should go for this grant." They said, "First go this fall, September, they want us to apply for a design grant, so you can get $500,000 to design the project." And pull in the smoke testing, the INI, the, really what they want to fix is the problem at the bottom, which is Plaza spewing out of the manhole. You roll that all into one design package, you design it, we could fund it, right? They design it, and then you go back queued up with your design that they paid for, for a funding grant to pull off that project. All the manhole mapping, all of that stuff is our skin in the game, so that we're ready to go, so we don't pay an engineer to do that, but we can have all of that data easily transferred over to whoever's going to design the project.
So the justification for, to be able to increase your SDC fees on that particular area, you have to do that study, and the money would come out of the current SDCs for that?
Well, what I'm saying is, is we do something similar to how we did the sewer rate study, where you pay a firm to develop the widget that helps you do it, and you do the gathering of other information. So you're not paying the $30,000 for 10 sheets of paper, but telling what other towns charge. You do it yourself, for the most part. So if that's something council wants to see, we can figure out where, where we pay for whatever that would cost. But currently, we're trying to fit, I mean, our brain in public works has been the INI into the sewer system, the smoke testing, dealing with the biohazard that happens. And so that's where staff's been focused, we haven't really been focused on stormwater, because we're just trying to deal with the rocks that are rolling towards us, and that currently isn't built out, and isn't rolling rocks in our direction at this time, if that makes sense.
Susan?
So, back in the wayback machine, CBGP 2006 021 did some water with water engineering. I'll see if I have.
I might have the binder up in the coffin.
Yeah, I think I have the city's stormwater plan on my.
What came from that? I think we do have one, I just don't think it's comprehensive to the, because our system isn't comprehensive to a certain point, yeah.
But it might.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah, it might be something to help.
Yeah, waste the places dark, but we're currently mapping where cholera exists, where it ends, where the waters, you know. Currently trying to get as much data we can with our own people.
My question is also that they failed miserably in what they were supposed to do, but maybe they could use something.
Okay.
Well, I can tell you one thing, what's on the horizon for the federal government, probably not under this current administration, if one occurs that has a look more aggressive attitude towards things, you're going to look at point source pollution, and that's where cholera comes out at. And they're going to make you require you to permit them, and to have some sort of action on how you can mitigate the issue. And it's going to hit you, and you better have some money to deal with it. And that SDC fund, that's what, you know, capital improvements, that's what it's for.
Yeah.
And we just haven't, haven't talked about, talked about, we just haven't done anything.
Well, that's really the one area that doesn't have an end known spot, right? So Corey Hill, all comes down to that prep's property, which is wetland, it filters through a number of things, and that's a place where tons of stormwater could go without a problem if we require people to disconnect. Eastside's got its field, that upper knob is really kind of no man's land, for where does it, does it fall off down towards the letter streets, does it come down gradually and end up, you know, so it's kind of a mess.
Oh, it's got to go somewhere.
Well, I think, I mean, ultimately, I think probably what the best way to do it is do the, somehow get by the school, go down the ditch behind the Catholic Church, that swale that they put in, and get it to the lower, by pump station three, there's a whole, I don't know if you've ever seen it, it's way overgrown now, but there's a whole storm detention rock pattern at the base of my street that was put in to capture that and diffuse it. So there's other things the city, you know, we could direct some of that stuff in a different direction, have this place go.
Tell our fancy designers to follow all of that hill to a retention pond to settle, and then dump into the lake, so Council Web don't have to pump it.
There you go. There you go, rainwater collection, really.
I don't know why it couldn't, really.
No, I think if you filter, I think you probably, you'd have to have some seven or something. Well, it's just like the stormwater at the new building goes off the roof into the parking lot underneath, gets over to that retention, silks through, gets back to the water table. There's ways to be functional and do what you got to do, so. Yeah, so there's options out there, it's a lot. So that wasn't even on by the city administrator's report. Do you have any other council or that stuff that people are concerned?
No, you guys have any phone calls?
My relatives live all the town.
How, how many?
I'm not related to half the town, I haven't seen that. I've got a little mouth out there.
You do?
Yeah. But it's a good, if I get property around and people are building and water's all going to funnel right toward my property, I'd be concerned.
Yes. Joseph, is there anything the city can do to remedy that kind of unfortunate situation out there with those three homes that are being built now, where some of the stormwater can go a different way, or?
No, so he has a plan, he gets it to the current ditches the city has. So short of a bigger plan that the city would come up with to take anything that gets built out there, it's functioning right now, but the city really doesn't need to get on the ball with either doing Louisiana ditching and having it go to a specific place, or doing Oregon ditching.
Okay.
The city just needs to get that ball rolling, so that when future buildings come, I don't, there's none of the rest of the property is listed currently on below that, those three houses. So I think people are just kind of holding on to their investments at this point. Across Louisiana, where the Green Tree Global Home Park is, that's sold now, and they'll have to do engineer storm draining plans for that as well. So we're requiring everything the public works standard requires of some of the buildings. So they're not giving away Scott Free or anything.
Part of the concern I got in a note was cramming in the.
Yeah, people don't.
Tiny little spaces in that trailer course.
Yeah.
That was part of it, half of it.
But part of the problem is, is if you don't want that to happen, you got to buy the property, because if they follow what the zoning says and the minimum lot size, they really can do a lot with the leased property, or make a lot of homes. So I'll run the fire report, because everyone's tired. So Rose Avenue, the plan list is complete. The senior board had their official walkthrough last Thursday to see the new building, and take their picture with their masks on. At the next council meeting, I'm going to be presenting a tenet agreement, which is kind of just what it sounds like. It's pretty much fashion similar, we had signed one before CBG, but when you get a CBG grant, you cannot have made any prior decisions, so we had to nullify it. So it's going to be very similar and contain very similar items as the old one did, but just be up to date reviewed by council, or legal council, and then brought to you guys. The goal is for the two entities to be fully functioning in there in August. We're getting it cleaned this week, the law office is coming to do the two sides. All that materials and tables and furniture and everything are being delivered there, so we're getting ready to do it. The food bank will move over from a Thursday at 2:00 to a Tuesday at 10:00, so we only have that period, whenever we pull up, for them to move. We're going to move what we can, and then they'll have those four days to move the rest of their entity and be ready to go. So it's kind of a timeline. Rachel Oregon from Renone Improvement Project hosted a fantastic planting party, and planted almost all the planters around the Rose Avenue building. So if you see Rachel or any of the master gardeners, give them a thank you, I'm writing them thank you notes, but they did a great job, and we had a lot of people donate perennials and different things to be planted. And then the back part that abuts, the state park land, is going to be planted an eco lawn, which is like a clover, different mix, that never grows tall, never has to be bowed, stays good most of the year, to kind of have a nice back, not terribly hard to take care of lawn back there. We're still planning on paving this month for utility over at our shop. We're kind of waiting on the contractor to schedule us in, but those should be happening this month, if not this month, definitely in August. And then we're currently working on the next SCA proposal, it's due July 31st, for the streets that we're going to propose, be the next ones to be worked on, and we're going to propose that to you guys on your 20th meeting. We're trying to see if we can do a few streets, not all together in town, like we did this year, but you have to meet the safety or capacity, like pedestrian or vehicle safety or the capacity problem, to get funded. One of the things we were hoping to do is resurface the pasture improvement of weed once we put the stormwater in, because everywhere utility cross is a big, huge divot that's really not safe for cars or anybody else, so. We're looking at that, we bring it to you on the 20th, so that we can apply for a revamp first. We still, we've had staff because of the holiday on vacation, so we did not, we have not finished reviewing the weed street stormwater improvement project, but once we do, we'll send it to the reviewing agencies. And we're currently collecting bids for the upcoming repair, resurfacing of the play shed roof. Everybody and their brother is super busy, so if you guys know any roofing companies that would like to bid, please let us know, contact staff, because we'd like to, as many bids as possible, it just seems everyone's either shut down or fully booked out to even come look at it. And then the CZ Trail and the water treatment plant property, you guys know with the correspondence.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Joseph, I was up at the center last night, I see that did cutting on for the.
Yeah.
Colbarian.
Excavation.
Yeah, so who's doing that?
So John Swart is doing the concrete, and Robert Watts is doing excavator.
Okay, all right. So do they have a timeline, when, do you have any expectation when you'll have the?
The Colbarian is still not ready yet, so, and we have to do the PSI testing for pressure. So I don't, I'd have to get that information back to you once the park demand, he talked at Onestown, I want to say last week, Wednesday, but I didn't, we sat down and chatted about it.
Okay, do you think it's going to be sometime this year?
Oh yeah, this summer, we're going to have it all put in and ready to go.
Good to see.
One of the things that we kind of missed that needs to come to you guys and update the master P schedule was. was some proposed, uh, the colbarium money, the amounts for what it is to be there in the Master B. So Ben was like, "You girls forgot the secondary piece." Cause it's only one hundred and plots, one and two, it's not colbarium. It's earned garden plots in it, but not if you're in the law.
I thought we already did that.
Well, we already talked about it, but never think the council and the Master B schedule for a resolution, so.
I, I swore we, we.
And then, and so we gotta maybe have even a workshop so we can go through it, kind of what the plan is. We've been trying to get the cemetery committee to meet to go over those numbers before we bring it to you guys, but I wasn't always able to make it over.
No, anyway, it, uh, it's encouraging to see. And of course, once again, I was really impressed by the, where the ground sold.
Yeah.
It was beautiful.
They're doing a great job.
And the grass is just fantastic.
Joe? Uh, yeah, um, Joseph, on the roofing, you said you were waiting for the school plans on the covered play shed? Did you ever obtain them?
The school didn't have them. They gave me the architect. I called the architect, they went through their archives and they didn't have them.
So you don't have them?
I don't have them.
Okay.
The, we know that they'll have to remove the roll roofing, replace the sheeting that's punky that you can see from underneath.
And some flashing probably.
And then flashing, yeah. So that's what the, we've gotten one proposal, um, where we have to get three, of course, because it's, they're running money into public procurement, so.
And then needed to mention, but I forget also, we haven't talked about a grand opening for our senior center.
No, so the seniors at Food Bank really wanted the grand opening to be once they were set up in there, so it'd look like what it is. Um, so we're looking potentially for that to be mid to late August, once they're set up and the dining room's set up and all their furniture's in. They'll be hosting takeout meals, hopefully the second week of August, the senior cook will be in there just doing takeout meals for, on delivery for seniors, but nobody eating in there until they can call us that way, you need, so.
And I just got one quick thing from our last meeting. Uh, staff will be sending emails to the committees inquiring about holding meetings.
Sorry, did that global forum last meeting? Yeah.
Yeah, my committee.
None of them want to.
No, they didn't, none of them wanted to say?
None of them are comfortable having our meetings.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, thank you. Thank you, Joseph. Action item summary.
I was wondering if the council, what's the council's?
Do you guys want to review that document and then at your next meeting, direct staff, put it on the agenda for the next meeting?
Oh.
So there's a request from the, um, Rachel Justice Group. We'll put a spot on it for discussion points for the next agenda. And then you guys can, um, discuss it in either direct, direct us, whichever way. And all the, the, um, using their topics in the board, they'll be, and then they're going to go.
Okay, action item summary.
Oh, name's.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, so we, staff is going to, um, put the two table resolutions and the proposal from the Rachel Justice Group, uh, on the next agenda. We're, staff's going to contact Dale Leatham and discuss whether Saturday market could be on the sign. Good here. Staff's going to make the corrections to the employment, uh, employee performance evaluation and check the formulas and then give it to Stephanie who will distribute it to you all. Oh, come on. I'm going to be sending the letter to Mrs. Bernardi regarding, um, that we're not able to lease out the property at this time. And, oh, staff's going to be checking the exit costs and the strategies for accessing data following termination. If there's an annual increase in the shop's, um, contract and if there's a termination fee, and bring that back to council with the tabling of the resolution for the intergovernmental drinking. And then plus somebody or others on top.
And just to remind everyone, uh, the next, uh, council meeting on July 20th will be a Zoom teleconference meeting.
So what do we need about, um, citizen of the month, shall we postpone it?
What was the question?
Citizen of the month.
I suppose we'll have to. Okay, um, thanks for reminding. Okay, with that, I'll adjourn the meeting at nine thirty-five. Meeting adjourned.